I'm going to go just see if there's like a jump.
Good evening, everyone. Let's get the party started. We are beginning, opening the meeting at 6:33. Are there any public comments?
There are no public comments at the moment.
Would you do roll call for me?
Commissioner Navin Santrahan.
President.
Commissioner Renee Rubin. Commissioner Yi Li Ho. Vice Chair Cynthia Quaid.
President.
Chair Peter Giuliani.
President.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on Zoom?
There are no public comments on Zoom.
Let's go on to the review of the minutes. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to review the minutes. Would it be appropriate for us to approve them or discuss them individually, or do you want to do them as a group? Well, let's do, let's start this way. March 27th, are there any ads addition or edits?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. How about May 8th? Minutes?
Nope.
Nope. I move that we accept these meetings. Do we need to vote on this? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I move that we accept the minutes as presented. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. On to the monthly investment report. Zen is not here. She continues to be on vacation. So, William, traditionally, we were, we had decided we're going to wait for Zen to have a chance to review it. Is this something different? Or do we want to go ahead and discuss it? Or do we simply want to postpone it until the next meeting when Zen will be back from vacation? Nick, go ahead.
On the mic.
No, it's not on.
I'm sorry. I got to learn the technology. So, the, the, the minute, the investment reports are provided as an informational item. So, it's up to the, the commission, if you'd like to, if you have questions on that, you know, you can certainly ask those questions or you can, you can defer this item to the next meeting. We're just presenting these as an informational item in case there are questions by the commission.
Well, we thank you for doing that. Does anyone have questions? I would propose that we table this for the next meeting after Zen has had a chance to review and give her thoughts on, on the report. Okay, Nick? Thank you very much.
Sounds good.
Okay. Item number three. Monthly, pardon me, item number four, update on the fund balances for all funds excluding the general fund. Nick, is this you?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And Tatiana, if there is, if Kelly is in the waiting room. Please let her in.
I have a Chris, but I don't have a, I don't have Kelly.
You might want to call her, see if she'd want to join us.
Yes, if you can hang with us for two minutes. She did just send me an email saying that she was gonna, so let me just check on her real quick.
Of course.
Let me write that down. And have you been teased about that your entire life?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Oh. Yeah, yeah. 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 By the way, Josh is out of town.
Hi, Kelly, are you, are you connected?
I am. I can hear you now. I couldn't hear you there for a minute.
Perfect. Technology, technology resolved. So, Chair and Commission, tonight, we have a follow-up from an item that was presented, first presented to this commission on April 16th at a joint meeting of the City Council and Finance Commission. And you received a progress report from the city's accounting and financial service consultant, LSL, who has been engaged to provide assistance with the FY 2324 year-end close in fiscal year 2425 accounting services and mid-year budget reporting. During the discussion, LSL was asked to return with more information on the beginning fund balances for the remaining funds that were not presented during that item and that, that particular meeting focused primarily on the general fund. Since that meeting in 20, in April, LSL has worked diligently with city staff to complete the 2324 year-end reconciliation and related 2425 projected fund balances. Again, since the general fund was, was discussed in detail, that is not in this particular schedule for this meeting tonight. However, that is reflected in the budget for item number five. So, all of the funds that are included in the updated 2425 projected fund balance schedule are special revenue and enterprise funds. So, tonight, and again, that is included as attachment A to your, your item. So, tonight, staff is asking for this commission to review the 2425 schedule of projected fund balances and provide any feedback to city staff prior to staff presenting this to city council. And we also, as you know, have Kelly Telford, Telford with LSL is on the phone that can also respond to any questions that you all may have. So, with that, we will turn it over to the commission for questions and discussion. And if I may, Chair, just, yeah, if you, if we can, we can quickly just review exhibit A. So, you'll see the attachment. We turn it sideways. It's in landscape format. So, you can see on the left are all of our various special revenue and enterprise funds. The first column is the unaudited beginning balance. So, that would be the balance as of June 30th, 2024. Then you have revenues, projected revenues, estimated expenditures, transfers in, transfers out. So, basically, the operational activity throughout the year. And then a projected ending balance, which would be as of June 30th, 2025, is all the way on the right-hand column. Then you'll notice that, so those June 30, 2025 numbers that are in the right-hand column, those will become, those become the beginning balance that you will see in item six tonight, or the item five tonight, review of the city budget. So, we wanted to give this, this commission opportunity to look at these fund balances, if there are any questions on those, before we went into the, the 2526 proposed budget.
Excuse me, Chair, can I have a quick question? Nick, did these, what's in this tab four is a little different than what's in the special fund balances, I think, in the budget binder? Did that just get updated?
So, what is in tab four shouldn't, should be the, the column all the way on the right?
Yep.
In tab four should be the, the left-hand column on, in the budget.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Nick, there was much conversation last year about the SLR funds and how they were going to be handled. How were they handled? And are we, did we lose any of those dollars?
So, my understanding, and Will will, will back me up, is that we, we did not lose any of those, those dollars. There was, they were transferred to another fund and used, will be used, I believe, in upcoming CIPs. But I'll have, Will, address that in better detail.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, so the SLR funds, as you recall, that those funds needed to be expended by December 31st, right? And so, what, what the city did was, they used those funds to, and expensed them for public services. And so, what that, what, what that, what that did was, we used up all the SLR funds and it freed up some of the funding in the general fund. So, that general fund that was freed up, it was moved to Fund 116. And so, Fund 116 now is like backfilling what the SLR fund, for, for a portion of them, what the SLR fund is, was funding for the CIPs.
Right.
Because there was a portion of that SLR fund that was funding CIPs. Now, Fund 116 is funding those. And then there is, there is an available balance that we have that is, that is, that is, that is undesignated. So, that's, it's available for city council for any special projects they would like to, to do.
Questions?
Yeah, two, two quick ones. So, it's kind of a two-parter, right? For the first part, any threats to this number? It sounds like we're still in draft form, but any major swings, do we think?
I'm sorry, to which numbers?
To the, this number is gonna, the ending balance is gonna go into our beginning balance. And it sounds like we're still in draft form.
I can probably answer that, if that would help. So, in the schedule that you have in front of you, the left-hand column that has the unaudited beginning balances are not really at risk of changing. The audit is nearly completed. So, I don't anticipate those numbers to move at all. The only thing that would change is your team is still behind on the fiscal year 2425 close. The month end closes and getting the accounting caught up. So, this is based on the best information that the departments could provide to us, especially on the expenditure side. So, the ending balance column really is a factor of what the year-end results are anticipated to be. So, you know, the numbers could go higher or lower, but these are the funds that, that don't tend to swing nearly as much as the general fund. So, I think you're, you're pretty good from a reliability perspective. There's some funds, I'll point out, for instance, Fund 236, about the seventh one, sixth or seventh one down, Measure M. That fund and your RMRA, your road maintenance and rehab account fund, those have pretty large projected ending fund balances. Those are likely to close that way, and that's just a factor of construction projects that haven't been completed and available funds to appropriate in future years. Most of your accounts that are close to zero or maybe a little bit negative, those are due to receivables that just haven't, haven't been received yet. There's some notes to this that your team has so that they can kind of help, as they do the 25-year-end close, help gauge what those year-end close, those year-end numbers really should be.
So, Kelly, let me piggyback on what Nevin asked. What is your level of confidence in these numbers, in that right, in that right-hand column in the moment?
I feel pretty good about it, especially for these funds. If there's a situation where, I'll use Measure M as my example. It goes down by a million dollars and it ends up being 1.4 million positive fund balance instead of 2.4. That just means that the projects that you had appropriated for that fund actually were closer to completion or you're actually spending that money for the projects that they're intended, which would be a good thing. There's a couple of funds in here that, while restricted, are a little bit less restrictive. You know, I, you're, there's a couple of them, let's see, as I scroll down. There's a couple of them that you have available, like for police, you know, if, if the police department needed to dip into some of that money. We've proposed some corrections, which is, are already reflected here. Your team already has the information for funds that were closed out in the prior fiscal year that still had a little bit of current year activity that they'll fix. But I think these are pretty reliable. And if the numbers are vastly off, it's because either revenue didn't come in timely and it's a receivable balance or projects are happening either faster or slower than what was anticipated when the departments developed their expense estimates. I do want to point out, if you, if you look to the bottom of your spreadsheet, that's where all of your, I guess, non-special revenue fund, the non-restricted, well, it's still restricted, but it's not your grant-type funding or your state funding. Like your $88 million water ending fund balance, for those funds, fund balance does not equal cash. Where more or less, your special revenue funds, your fund balance tends to equate about what available cash is. Here, that 88 million really is predominantly capital assets. And if you think about it, you capitalize the asset and depreciate it over the life, the useful life. So, it's, that is not spendable ending fund balance. You've got a really big deficit in your 2016 water revenue bond fund. Well, that's because you have a liability, a very large liability, that you're paying over the course of the next X number of years. Those are totally normal to be that high and that far negative. Those don't worry me at all.
Nevin, did I answer your first question?
Yes, I did.
And you have a second question?
Just, you know, this one's minor. It's a clerical thing. So, on, on this spreadsheet that you have, it has enterprise funds and delineated pretty clearly. Do you think we could put special revenue funds under description, like we have enterprise funds under description on that second page? You see what I'm saying? Yeah. Just so the public knows what's going on. And then, I guess, this leads into sort of the larger question, and we'll probably tease this out in the budget conversation, is we are using numbers that are not finalized to build a budget. And I have some worry about that. I, I hear you, Kelly, that you feel very confident in this. But I think as we move forward, we need to figure out more governance around a better, better numbers. I understand the complexities of producing a budget in a short amount of time without the staff to do it. But I think that we just gotta get our timeline better.
Kelly, again, piggybacking on what Nevin's suggesting here, and I, this is the third or fourth year we've found ourselves in this position, creating a budget that, with numbers that are a little squishy. So, what do, what I'd love you to do is to coach us, us being the Finance Commission, on what we should be doing more, better, different in order to help support Nick and Todd as they prepare, as they go through this year's budget, and William, of course, as they go through this year's budget, and then as we prepare to do it next year. So, how do we get to a place where we're not having this conversation next year?
There are, as, as you're coming up, there are a couple tips and tricks that your team, and, and this would be Will, that they can do to kind of help with this. In a grant fund, like your RMRA fund, that available fund balance is just unspent revenues. But it could easily be a million of it that's already been programmed as a part of your CIP program. So, there's some pretty easy math that your finance department can do to take that 2.4 million, or I don't have that, 2.7 million. At the, at the end of 2024, we had an appropriate, or 25, we had an appropriation, an unspent appropriation of a million dollars. So, there's 1.7 available to appropriate. The special revenue funds truly are a little bit easier for you to think of from a budgeting perspective because it's, a lot of it is capital project-related. And your prior year budget adoptions, that unspent money, you can deduct from that ending number. And that is what would be available, if that, if that makes sense.
That, that is helpful. Nick, pardon me, Todd, you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I think that the commission's aware that we were waiting on the, the final draft and, and the finalization of 2324 audit. Obviously, we were in constant contact with LSL, making sure those numbers matched up. We, we are a few weeks away from being fully staffed, plus we're going to be keeping on a few contractors to ensure that we can catch up on the 2425 audit. Once, once those numbers are solidified in 2324, we're moving on for 2425 and have a decent idea of where the, the audit is before this process ever starts. I think it sort of starts taking care of itself, but it's, it's just a timing issue right now with closing these. I think the other issue over the, the fall that we're going to have to deal with is that, you know, we're still doing some research on funds that are 10, 15 years old, haven't been touched, haven't been corrected. So, there's, there's things that we are going to have to dive in to continue perfecting the, the numbers that we have here. But I think the timing of the audit and putting this thing together in six weeks when we finally had numbers are something that are going to be easier to overcome as we work through 2425 close this fall. So, I think it takes care of itself.
Thank you. And, and Todd and, and Nick, the mayor's been counseling us to be patient. And she's been doing that for the last six months. And I actually did that to her a year ago. Okay, so I'm, I'm getting back what I, what I gave her. So, thank you. And we're going to continue asking you the questions. I feel like that's our responsibility. But again, we understand where you are. We understand from a staffing standpoint, what the, some of the, some of what you discovered when you, when you arrived.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's more just a matter of, we're, we're finally starting, as we're closing out these books, we're able to start establishing some baselines to start, you know, start the new budget processes from. And it'll, the, the process will continue to get a little bit tighter as we get through the 2425 audit here in, in the next few months. So, we're not going to be in this position in, in a year.
Thank you.
And Todd or Nick, could you also explain to the Finance Commission, the budget software, which has been talked about for a long time, and sort of where that stands and, and what we're doing?
I'll take, I'll take this because I have the most plausible deniability. So, I think we just need to evaluate it. I don't know exactly, we haven't, we didn't use it to put together this year's budget. That's the status. But, you know, I, I think we, I'm not saying it's bad or good or useful or not useful. We just need to evaluate it.
Yeah. And Nick, I would strongly advise you, just friend to friend, when you do this presentation next week to the city council, be prepared to answer that question because that will come up, I guarantee you.
My, what I'm hearing, though, is that the budget software is not super compatible with our accounting software.
Yes.
So, that was something that the city council approved, the purchase of that a couple of years ago. So, that's not on this group. It's on, you know, it just happened.
Yeah. Once the, once the budget, I guess to further build on that, once the budget is adopted and Nick and Will can breathe, the first, the first priority really is to start evaluating our accounting software. We're not even sure we're using the budget module that came with the accounting software properly. So, there's an opportunity to migrate that software into the cloud, modernize it. We're also doing a payroll study right now, trying to make sure that, that that technology also interfaces. So, we'll be taking a look at all the technology over the fall when we make the decision on how to upgrade that system to try to, at the end of the day, give you better financial reporting.
And, and since you, you gentlemen, were not involved in the purchase or recommendations around that software, please know, I, I've been in software implementation for a long time in my career. There's some times when you just have to say, no mas. We're done. We were starting from scratch and that, that, we're not going to like hearing that because we put a lot of dollars into this, but just.
I think we're probably no mas.
No.
Yeah, I think, I think the upgrade of the, of our current accounting system, the cloud, using the budget modules there and trying to get you financial reporting is more important right now than trying to make a system fit that doesn't work, seem to integrate right now. So, honest as I can be with you.
Well, no, we appreciate the honesty.
Appreciate it.
Commissioners, any other questions while we have the city manager and the new CFO here? Okay.
Okay.
Kelly, thank you so much. We continue to be in your debt. And again, look for your counsel on how this group should be working even better.
No worries. Anytime. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again.
Thank you. Is it, Nick, is there anything we need to vote on in this regard?
No, again, that was an informational sort of receiving file and feedback. So, we will make, we did get that feedback on the special revenue funds title header. It makes a lot of sense. So, appreciate that.
In case I wasn't clear, though, if, if you get to the point where that software, you, we just have to toss it? Let's just say that.
Understood, yeah.
Square peg, round hole, don't, don't do that.
Yeah, understood. And we have priorities, as, as the city manager said, we have priorities in software. And we got to figure out where that fits in.
I'd rather see you use a sharp stick and soft clay, really, than try to force it into this, this software. Got it. Okay. Thanks. Appreciate it. Let's go on to Nick. Oh, okay. Todd, are you going to go into the budget? Oh, thank you. And may I compliment you on your lack of PowerPoints?
I'll take that compliment now. Kind of give everybody an overview.
Well, thank you.
The, after we present the PowerPoint, we have solid compliments and really pretty incredible performance. I was going to talk to you. I'd just like to thank our department directors, who are very serious with the flat budget. They're good with the situation we're dealing with. It allows us to. figuring out the situation we're dealing with, that allows us to go in the baseline. You know, I'll be perfectly honest, if you feel like a lot of the past budgets were submitted, sacred deeds, a lot of crosswalks, it's a perfect thing. So this is, this is an opportunity for you to bring a lot of effort into making your budget, make sure that the results can go over the ninety to a whole, and say, that's a great, a great thing. You know, I'd make, thank you, Bill, so much. I want to give you a, go through a general fund overview, and I think you're in a much better shape than I thought you were. And we're, you know, a lot of budgets were paid costs, trying to figure out where we stood. And then we're going to have other directors come in, and we get their, their budget. I think the most important thing on this slide to me is that last one. This, that, or I was like, I love the content, you know? Very excited about starting the budget next January, following here, and of course, the whole process plays towards different budget times to think. Next slide. So the question, the question I have to get is how do you build the budget? You just post numbers out there. You start very early on with the council priorities. And when you see the budget slide later on, some, what we're going to be presenting for next year, we will get started on the budget in January, council in February, document, new document, the document, it's interdefined, it makes sense, but they're the council priorities, they are how the budget documents that we put together. Just to point out, a few things tonight, council priorities, the general areas that council goals were put into like months ago before I started, people helped to act, was that the first one on the line, same with mine. Under the finance, we, this, attention and recruitment staff, financial reporting, budgeting, we've been really from, from Georgia our time, the budget that we're presenting, he does account for a new compensation classification schedule, does combat schedule, we're currently in the negotiation, all party, and so, just paying for those, those contracts and I got. So it's a good thing we're, you know, and obviously projected out and feel comfortable there over the next period of years. I think it's still fundamentally, it's a good employee, so that is going to be a good organization. Infrastructure, you're aware of the, yeah, you know, we're pretty good shape for the next year or two. Maybe we got the money, started twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and five years to that, so we'll have, we'll have that expression with the Finance Commission, the council, if they're planning, having had it, the policy, the plan we do. And this internally, so we don't, we say it's huge rollovers of dollars and projects. We're meeting with our public works team and our internal finance team on a bi-week basis at least, while our road projects, new projects, making sure that we stay on task and take things out the door. Most importantly, think of resource, think, give them stuff. With local safety, through a crosswalk with the creators, a lot of movement in cities, structural restructuring, almost every meeting with a restructuring partner, trying to figure out how to get the work done on the bottom half, give our department, or also start starting a community civil finance project. The, this, the way I have kind of put out there is other governance section, I wanted to get on that a little bit. A lot of our time being spent right now on updating policies, last year, we decided to go on. We had one, uh, technology department, went, there were work to do there, going to payroll, about seventy, you know, to kind of make a good start with management, with that in organization. As you say, all, even with bigger budgets, I'm actually nervous, being always getting a handle on my own thing, so. Not necessarily looking for insurance, I'm talking about private work. So major, major issues, policy issues, and certainly, you can talk to them. While not, the council, a lot of them go forward in order to address the problems. And so I. Any survey was also conveyed to our budget team. I'm seeing a lot of overlap. The council was told, it was always very good. Much, much emphasis upon quality of life here, infrastructure, public safety, things you expect to see. We are continuing to perform our infrastructure, public safety as well, with, with absolutely no changes to the public safety budget. There's points that are continuing to look for ways to support them through the new program, that's what I'm saying. So there remain top, top lines, love. The other priorities from this group, their maintenance, I think, have also been on the growth record, going down for a left flash. We decided to create a theme for this year's budget, laying a foundation for a resilient future. Kind of positive enough, which had enough negativity the last year, too, the committee just wanted to be a part of that. So really, with the highlights of this budget, the way we're implementing it, our department, our basic, a lot of change in the department, many of these positions are, are being added, compared to the, that we need to discuss now, first thing, CIP, it's a face, CIP management, IT management, it's a base of things. There's, you might take advantage of your role and different issues here, that people acknowledge, so. We're also spending quite a good time with the sure, we have to approach over that cost, all, all the funds, where the general fund's not, all the, all the, the other funds as well, is appropriate, especially when you have enterprise funds that are root based, it depends on what you show. So I feel like we're pretty good, middle ground there, a lot of, oh, a lot of rations out to that. We provide a lot of good courses to improve our community engagement, of outreach, but our maybe some business established, a public care department, first within, the then, the horn, was recently hired public care manager, spending quite a bit of time on putting together a communication plan for how to publish an interface with various social media, data platforms. So that's something that we share with the council, it's one of the things. But these are, this is the kind of foundation of the budget you're saying, it is a, it is a pretty flat budget. Purpose for that, again, for ourselves, as it's months, and obviously to make sure that we, because they absorb the baseline. There's been a lot of certification of, on revenue side, a lot of, there's, but we got that right. We can make sure that, that our, that also are holding, hey, there. That's where we are, and I'll turn it over to Nick with the point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, man.
So, oh, you didn't have it on. Who? No one heard that. He just gave an amazing speech and no one had heard him. At home, heard any of it. So I'm going to give a budget overview. So in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, the total budget for all funds, so general fund, special revenue funds, internal service funds, the, the whole, the whole pie is a hundred and eight million dollars, with general fund and, and related internal service funds comprising of just under fifty million dollars, which is about forty-six percent of that total budget. The general fund budget by itself is forty-two and a half million dollars. And we'll go into more detail on that general fund budget at a later point in this presentation. So this is a, one of the slides that Todd was talking about earlier. And although he mentioned that this is sort of a flat budget, I wouldn't, it, it's flat from an expenditure and, and revenue standpoint, but it's not flat from a, a taking action standpoint. So we, we really worked on, on holding the line on revenues expenditures, but then restructuring in a strategic way. So as you can see, in, in an attempt to achieve some better governance and moving the City Council and community priorities forward, part of that is having the right talent in the right places. So to that end, a significant number of organizational changes have been approved by City Council over the past few months. Although there have been no net increases in the number of authorized and funded full-time employees, a number of positions have been eliminated and replaced with new positions that focus on community engagement, financial control, capital project management, and customer service, which are all things that the council and, and community has been asking for. And although we do have currently thirteen vacancies, and these are positions that don't currently have somebody that's accepted the position and starting to onboard, that has been significantly reduced from a few months ago, when there were about thirty vacancies back in March. So we've cut, in, in four months, that, that number of vacancies has been cut in half, which, which just helps productivity overall. Can you? Thank you, Tatiana.
Nick, I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, but when I looked at the, my initial review of the budget, one of the things that I noticed was that you're, you're organizing yourselves around these pillars of activity and that you didn't increase headcount. That was one of the things that we were monitoring very closely the last couple of years. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and that, and, and, you know, Todd was very, that, again, going back to that, that budget theme of laying a foundation for a resilient future. You know, you can't be resilient if you're spending all of the money, you know, right away. We have to keep an eye out toward the future. So the idea was just make some changes within what we had. So now we'll focus on the general fund, which is the city's primary operating fund and serves as a financial backbone for delivering essential public services. Its main function is to account for revenues such as property tax, sales tax, utility users' tax and user fees that are not legally restricted for specific purposes. These revenues fund core services like public safety, parks, public works, and general administration. So you'll see in this slide, a healthy general fund is essential for fiscal stability, operational sustainability, and the ability to respond to emergencies or unforeseen needs because it supports critical services that residents rely on. For the city's budget policy, which I also want to know is in the budget tonight, and if, if there are, is any feedback on what that looks like, we'd also ask for that feedback tonight on the budget policy. The general fund must be balanced with sufficient estimated revenues to support proposed expenditures. Going one step further, this slide shows that estimated ongoing revenues actually exceed ongoing expenditures. So we, we, we sort of broke it up. So on the left, there are ongoing revenues, ongoing expenditures. So from a, from an operational standpoint, we have about a hundred and eighty thousand in, in ongoing revenues exceeding expenditures. Now, you know, on the one time, you know, we, we kind of separate some of those revenues that come in that are one-time revenues. And we try to focus those on one-time expenditures. We try to match those up. We are spending a little bit more on one-time expenditures, but that's okay. That's just kind of comes out of some of what the operating is. Much of that is, is, as you'll see in, in one of the upcoming slides or in the enhancement schedule, some of that is for some real critical public safety equipment that, that is being recommended in this budget. So overall, the, the revenues do exceed general fund expenditures by about fifty thousand dollars. So I do want to spend a little bit of time on forecast methodology. Obviously, revenues are the, the parameters or the box that you have to live within when you're, when you're budgeting. So I think it is worthwhile to just spend a few minutes talking about how we forecast in our, our revenues. And as you can see, our top five revenue sources actually make up eighty-five percent of the budget. So, so if we can do, if we can forecast these accurately, you know, we're, we're pretty comfortable that, that our, our resources will match our expenditures at the end of the year. So developing these projections each year is one of the first steps to developing the budget. Accurate revenue projections from the, form the parameters for available resources for upcoming fiscal year. These categories are organized, as you can see, from, on the top are the, the most stable revenue source down to the bottom, which are the most volatile and sensitive to economic trends on the bottom. So fortunately, South Pasadena's primary revenue source is property taxes, which make up about forty-one percent of total available resources. It's also one of the most stable form of revenue, tax revenue that, that municipal governments have, because it's based on the value of real property. Then this is followed closely by vehicle license fees, which are really just another form of property tax, but it's just taxing your vehicle instead of your home or your, your, your physical property. So those are the two, those are our two highest revenue sources, and they're also very stable. Sales tax tend to be the more volatile as they're based on economic activity in the, in the city. You know, sales tax does only make up about thirty, thirteen percent of total revenue. So the general fund as a whole is a bit less economically sensitive than other communities that, that may rely heavily on sales tax. Many of you may have heard through, and during the pandemic, there's many communities out there that rely heavily on, you know, Home Depot or some, you know, some retail store that wasn't essential. And it was really, it, it really caused some hard times. So having us not, being as reliant on sales taxes is typically a good thing from a stability standpoint. And then, as you can see in this, in this slide, the, the city makes projections using a number of different inputs, including historical data, historical trend data, projections by consultants that specialize in that particular area, and expected economic trends after reviewing the economic outlook report. And in the city manager's budget message, there is a section on economic outlook where we go into a little bit of the rationale as to what, you know, we see in the next year from economic activity. So this is the general fund revenue by category, just a different way of, of kind of showing what was in the last slide. So the total projected general fund revenue is for twenty-five, twenty-six is forty-two point six million. That represents an increase of about three point four percent, which quite frankly is very much in line with the increase in assessed values, which is just under four percent for South Pasadena. So we're very confident that that's a, a very realizable figure. Despite some expected flattening in a number of revenue categories that are highly sensitive to economic pressures, including sales tax, UUT and development fees, which, you know, based on the uncertainty in the economy with, you know, tariffs and, and other, other economic pressures, we do expect those to be relatively flat and maybe even, maybe even have a little bit of a pullback in some areas. But again, property tax revenue is expected to increase about three point eight percent. And, and that should really bodes well for a, a sustainable revenue source this year. Next slide, please. So my last slide before I turn it over to Will. Oh, no, this is actually Will's slide. Will, you're up. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Into the mic, please.
I have one question. Is it a rounding feature that in here, where the property taxes showed forty-one percent and on the slide it showed forty percent?
I would, it's most likely a rounding error. Yeah. So, and what happens sometimes is like, you know, one of the other funding source will, will adjust. We are adjusting some of the budget throughout. So if it goes down fifty dollars, it might go from forty point four percent to forty point five percent, and then it rounds up instead of down, so.
Okay, thank you.
I think just from a consistency point, like intergovernmental and vehicle license fees, you use it interchangeably?
Yes, so intergovernmental is the category because I don't want to bore you, but there was this thing called the triple flip back in the early two thousands, which was a fancy way for the state to keep revenues that typically would go to cities. Basically, what they did is the, you know, voters over many years had, had approved measures that required certain types of taxes. So they, they required a certain number of vehicle, like property taxes, to go to schools. And so they wanted to cut school budgets so they could send more money somewhere else. They basically did this thing called the triple flip where they, they substituted property tax for sales tax and backfilled. And so technically, even though their vehicle license fees, it does come from the state. So it's intergovernmental. So they're classified as intergovernmental, but it is really just interchangeable with vehicle license fees. We get property tax payments in two talks. That's correct. December and, yes. Yes, but mostly December, January, and then again in like April, usually April. So as property owner, you pay your property tax in, it's due in November and, and March. So a month later are when we get the majority of, of payments. That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, so for the general fund expenditures for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, they will be approximately forty-two point five million. That is a decrease of about one point four percent from the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five adjusted budget. And one of the, one of the ways we were able to achieve that was we actually went and asked departments to justify their operating budget by line item. So to sure that we had all the resources. So to ensure that we had all the resources, um, we needed for this upcoming year for, um, you know, the necessary, um, implementation of budget goals, a strategic restructuring, recruitment, retention and organizational morale initiatives. In a city government, um, it's, it's pretty typical for personnel to be about two-thirds of the, um, of the budget, um, because city is fundamentally, um, a service organization rather than a, um, than a product-based business. So, um, you know, in a manufacturing plant, um, they invest heavily in raw materials and machinery and facilities to produce a tangible product. At the city, you know, um, the, the product we produce or we provide is, uh, essential services to the community, such as, um, you know, police and fire protection, um, street maintenance, library programs and community development, which are inherently, um, labor-intensive. And really the, the knowledge and experience that, um, from our skilled employees is really the, the raw material and the machinery that the city uses to meet the community needs, um, effectively. Next slide, please. The city of South Pasadena is a full-service city, and it's common for at least, uh, public safety, which comprises of police and fire, to make up about 50% of the general fund. And that is basically because police and fire and emergency, emergency medical services require, um, around-the-clock staffing. There requires specialized training, uh, significant investing, investment in personnel, equipment and facilities to ensure public safety, um, and rapid emergency responses. Similarly, um, at administrative support functions, um, for example, from the city manager's office and from finance, it's typically around 25 to 30%. And that's pretty much in line with the proposed budget.
Can I interrupt before we move on? So, um, I just, I've had to produce flat budgets before, and it doesn't feel great. So Mayor, I just want to be mindful that the staff may be feeling in particular ways. And I understand why we're doing it, to get some data points. But it's a tough pill to swallow with a potential increase of 3.4%. That's fair, but I think, um, let's just be mindful of, of a morale of our staff.
So what you have here is our one-time enhancements. These are a number of recommended to be funded through the proposed budget. They are part of, they're already incorporated in our proposed budget. And although, and although not all requests, uh, were included due to the limited funding, the recommended enhancements, um, are necessary, um, to reduce the liability by enhancing employee, employee safety or meeting a legal or compliance requirement. And if you see to the right, we have a table for vehicle replacement. We'll be replacing 21 vehicles, um, with a cost of about 1.5 million. Currently, the city doesn't have a vehicle replacement plan. So we are not accruing funds for the replacement of future vehicles. We do, we will be looking at this in the fiscal year 2526, um, but, um, year, um, in order to achieve this, um, this is, but this is our starting point. We at least have an inventory of the vehicles that we need replaced for the next few years. And then the next part is how are we gonna, uh, find the funding for this replacement? Um, and to recap, before we get into each department's presentation, you will see the budget theme of laying the foundation for a resilient future as, um, our city manager and assistant city manager have, um, already stated. Embodied in the budget through strategic restructuring, addressing recruitment, retention and organizational morale, and implementing best financial practices and processes through the organization. And, um, I think, um, are there any questions before we get into the department, um, presentations?
Well, you might have one.
Yeah.
There, over the last couple of budgeting cycles, one of the questions that was difficult to answer, and I don't think it's going to be difficult to answer right now, because I've already asked the question of Todd and Nick, is you are assuming, your budget assumes, uh, fully, fully staffed and, uh, a fully-staffed, uh, city, city, uh, employees, yes? There's no accommodation for the vacancy rate, yeah?
No.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So that, 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 that was, that was a big question we couldn't get answered for the last couple of years. Thank you.
Will, and I heard you loud and clear. And this budget, we have eliminated any, any position that is not filled, that we don't intend to fill, has been eliminated. And so everything else has been recruited.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that. So, and I, I would suggest that that is something you put a big star next to when you go to city council next week. It's going to be key. Second question is, uh, I'm, I'm making an assumption, and I'm going to check my assumption. So Will has, is head of a department, or one of these folks out here, head of a department. They, for one reason or another, cannot fill a position. Those dollars do not, cannot be reallocated, correct?
Only in the sense that if we needed to bring in a contract employee, like we're doing in finance right now.
Perfect.
Uh, that it'd be eligible to use, so the work could get done.
You're answering my questions. Thank you.
This is fully staffed as of the start of the budget cycle? Or did you like tier in your hiring?
It's, it's from the beginning of the, the budget cycle.
July 1.
Hundred percent.
So you're going to see savings essentially eventually. You're not going to hire everyone by July 1?
Well, as, as our city managers, I said, you know, um, we either, if we're not hiring them, then we're eventually going to need a contractor, or we're going to need overtime, or we're going to need some kind of temp staff to come in and, and, and fill in that, that void.
And we will be, uh, updated on what happened at mid-year review, correct?
Correct.
Got it. Fair enough. Thank you.
Just to kick off tonight, the city manager's office, there, we, in each one, we've given an overview sheet for each of the departments, just to kind of make it easy for you, uh, just what we're working on, how we're staffed, how it compares to the last year or two. What this slide does show is that we, we have eliminated the management services department that, uh, was in the budget before. You're going to see it on two places. Some of it's in the city manager's office, such as the city clerk's office. The, uh, HR department, HR and risk has been moved under finance, under Nick. So, um, hopefully that helps with the, kind of trip the numbers. The, the only, uh, change that you're going to see here is the addition of a public affairs manager, uh, within our department. Other than that, everything is relatively the same. I think, I think Nick is probably being counted in the office, in this office as well. Is that correct or not? Yeah, okay. So, so everything really is the same with the exception of the public affairs officer being added. Department, uh, where really our focus is, I don't want to sound too redundant, but, uh, most of these, uh, are obviously, since the city council sets my goals, uh, direct city council assignments. You know, establishing our communication strategy, uh, recruiting for new, for vacancies. As you've heard, we've knocked that number down significantly. In fact, we're expecting to, um, have that 13 down to 10 or so pretty quickly. One of the things I take the most pride in is when I started, we had two positions filled in the finance department, out of 10 or 11, and we'll be fully staffed in about three weeks. So that's pretty, uh, that's been great, uh, to, to watch that happen. So, yeah. Yeah. We're also reviewing our recruitment and retention practices. I think an important part of this budget process is we have significant number of, of positions that are well under the market, um, that the budget contemplates, um, moving, getting agreements in place and moving them more towards the middle of the market, as well as trying to keep up with our comparable communities and the cost of living assumptions. So that was a kind of a huge issue in terms of trying to slow down the, uh, you know, the movement that we've seen in the city, the attrition over the last several years. And, uh, we'll know over the next, course of the next year or so how that's panning out. But that's a, that's been a direct, uh, strategy from council. We're currently negotiating all the MOUs with the bargaining agreement, or bargaining units. I'm hoping to have agreements in place sometime in the next few months. And in terms of governments, we're, we're going to continue refining, working with the city council. In fact, I owe them a update here in another month or two on our annual priorities and goals, how we're doing. We just, uh, we're meeting with council next week, and there's an update. We've created a scorecard to make sure that they see the progress that we're making on the budget. And then working with all the, uh, commissions to start establishing work plans. The mayor and I are starting to have fun with that. So, um, it will eventually hit the, get to the finance commission as well. So this is where we're spending our time. No major changes, just, uh, dividing the management services department out. So next slide. And I'll stay up here and do community developments, since our new director is on vacation that I promised she could take. No changes in community developments. The main, the one main position here, when, one main reason that you're seeing the FTEs down is we've, uh, eliminated the deputy director position. So that, that really accounts for the, the decrease in FTEs that you're seeing. They have a lot on their plate right now. We're going through, obviously, the, the general plan, the, um, housing element updates, uh, with our, our zoning and height density. So we're hopefully going to be in the next couple of months getting that approved. And then it'll be right into the objective design standards, which is one of the, uh, one-time, uh, issues that you saw funded in the budget. Um, and also need to create an ADU, uh, pre-reviewed program as well in order to comply with the state. So they're doing a lot of code review. We recently have restructured, we've got, uh, two senior planners right now. One of them's focused on getting people through the processes, the other one is working on code updates. I would say the, uh, other major issue is, is just making sure that we are, uh, on a staff development perspective, making sure that we're investing, our staff's very young. So we're really trying to make sure that they're getting exposed to best practices, ongoing training, building up their confidence as they're doing their jobs. And happy to answer any questions with community development as well. Okay.
Good evening, Chair Giuliani, Commissioners and Honorable Mayor. Lucy Acobia, Community Services Director. Community Services Department provides an array of activities and programs across all ages. Our department is comprised of four different sections, four different divisions. Community Services being, it would oversee all of the grants, management, special projects and all the city leased facilities. Senior Services, as the name calls it, all programs and wellness, uh, activities for our senior population, including our nutrition program. Recreation Youth Services, after-school programs, summer camps, recreational classes, facility reservations, picnic reservations, as well as special events. And finally, our transit division, which is our door-to-door transportation program for our elderly adults. And, uh, looking in the future, we are looking forward to bringing on new programs and doing some capital improvement programs at the stables, at Eddie Park House, as well as completing the Parks Comprehensive Plan. Thank you. And I will continue with the golf course. That is part of, uh, city leased facilities under Community Services. And last week at the council meeting, council did direct staff to release an RFQ. So we will be releasing that on Monday, uh, trying to explore a private-public partnership to bring in partners out there to finance, to redevelop the golf course and make it, um, more lucrative. I lost my throat, my train of thought, I apologize. And as far as capital improvement projects, we do have some equipment replacements in place as well as some work that needs to be done in the course for lighting.
I'm assuming most of the projects are more long-term. So we're just going to wait till the RFQs finalize and get some partners to help us?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a, you know, we've got the library, we've got the golf course, we've got lots of streets. So I think Todd and Nick are looking at alternatives.
To add a little bit of clarification to, to your, your, your question, there's probably a couple, there's probably at least one project we're going to have to move on, and that's the netting. You know, um, one of, one of the things that we're spending a lot of time on is just sort of tackling projects. We've got liability exposure. So that's probably going to be one, as long as, as long as it doesn't impact the, uh, master plan for the golf course. It's a huge expense, it's about $800,000 or so, uh, to fix it. But we really need to do it because it's, it's easy to spend that in litigation. So that's probably the only exception to that. But yes, the whole point of that is to bring somebody in to provide the capital, see if we can, uh, see if we can work a short-term lease, 15 to 20 years to, uh, build it, rebuild the clubhouse, new facilities, modernize the golf course and, uh, what the trade-offs are. But given, given the fact that we're looking at, you know, tens of millions of dollars in, in road repair funds, possibly needing to contribute to the library, we really felt like we had to do something different with the golf course if we were going to try to modernize it.
Okay, um, so the finance department, the finance department is responsible for overseeing, uh, the city's fiscal health, including its budgeting, purchasing and, uh, accounting for all departments under the direction of, um, the assistant, uh, city manager and chief financial officer. Its core response, its core responsibilities include the administration of financial affairs of the city, compiling budget expenses, um, incoming, uh, income statements, uh, maintaining a general accounting system and monitoring the, the distribution of all monies, processing payroll and accounts payable. The department prepares, uh, for audits, annual comprehensive financial reports and reporting requirements by the state controller. For 2526, um, human resources and information technology have moved, um, into finance, which is why you will see, um, an increase in FTEs under those two divisions. Some of the notable, uh, work plans for 2526, um, is the, um, provide a more robust and transparent, um, data-driven framework for the budget process. The goal is to submit, uh, the, the, the budget book, um, at the, for the GFOA award for, um, budgeting, um, excellence. That is, um, a big task, but, um, under, um, with the guidance from, from our, um, chief financial officer and our city manager, I'm sure that, that is very much achievable. So we're also hiring a CAP analyst position. This position will be responsible for, uh, working with Public Works and developing, uh, the five-year, uh, CAP plan and finding, um, the alternative funding sources, uh, for these, for these projects. And we're also going to be, um, uh, hiring a purchasing and contract administrator. That, uh, the responsibility for that position will be to modernize the city's purchasing policies and procedures to streamline and reduce, um, administrative costs, insurance procurement, uh, timelines and ensure regulatory, um, compliance. Human resources, human resources will continue to address the class and comp study through labor negotiations, focus on recruitment to fill vacant positions with highly qualified staff, and evaluate the risk management program to better serve the needs of the organization. And lastly, um, finance will work through a newly established IT position to review, um, the city's technology, technology environment and closely manage the IT support, um, supporting vendor.
For the, sorry, for the CIP analyst, so two sides to grants, right? There's compliance and going to go get them sales essentially?
Right.
Is this, is this CIP analyst or the staffing, what are they responsible for?
So the CIP, the CIP analyst, it's, it was really set up initially to ensure that, uh, Public Works and Finance were on the same page, that their numbers matched. For some reason, a few years ago, the CIP was off-boarded from Finance to Public Works. Um, and then, um, so at this point, we're centralizing it back in Finance where it should be. And this position will ensure continuity of data between the two departments. There will be grant reporting. We're also heading a different path, though. We've got two firms right now that we're working with that are submitting our grant reports. We've got two firms right now that we're working with that are submitting our grant reports, they're working with the directors. Both of them have legislative lobbying branches as well to help us with that. So that's how I envision us continuing to go after the grants. Look, you know, they're far more wired in than we are in terms of the opportunities we're meeting on a monthly basis. But you'll see more compliance internally, the sales, marketing part of it will be outsourced.
And Todd, before you leave, one of the questions that we had for the last couple of years was, we were fairly good at getting the grants, but we were losing money because we weren't being able to use the grants in a timely fashion.
Yeah.
Will the CIP, would that be the role of this individual?
Yeah, I've actually have a team right now working on completely overhauling our reporting system to where we can manage that on a monthly basis. We are also in the process of moving up every grant opportunity we have right now, particularly in the road programs. Some of these grants were obtained four or five years ago, they're expiring in 24 months, so.
That was the.
We're working with Michael and the team. Council just approved several contracts for us to bring on augmentation of staff in order to get those out the door and manage those, so we don't lose that money. But yeah, that's something that we have to avoid at all costs.
Will that live in the CIP role? For the best.
The, there's two parts to that. The CIP role will be focused on reporting and continuity of information. We have created, as you might have seen on the initial crosswalk, a number of CIP project managing positions. Those folks will report to our city engineer and they will be responsible for delivering the CIP. Until we get them hired and onboarded, we have outsourced that work in order to ensure we don't lose that grant money.
I have a minor question. And I think this goes back to what you said earlier. I noticed that finance salaries, permanent salaries have basically tripled over last year. So that is in anticipation of having a fully staffed department? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
We'd like that.
Yes.
It also is a function because without the Management Services Department, that got folded into some in Finance, some in City Manager's Office. So a good component of that is also that some of those positions, IT and HR, that lived in the Management Services are now under the purview of Finance. So that is also adding to that increase.
Nick, this is so logical. I was part of the Finance Commission when Todd's predecessor proposed the Management Services Department, and I never could figure out why. So this, thank you for doing this, this is imminently more logical.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Greg Lloyd, Fire Chief, and I'll be presenting on behalf of the Fire Department. For this upcoming year in alignment with the theme of laying a foundation for a resilient future, the Fire Department's primary goal has been to strengthen the infrastructure of the department, assess life safety hazards, and look out for the health and welfare of our personnel. The 23 members of the Fire Department are committed to continuing exemplary service, which this community demands, and that includes 50 years of paramedic service that we are celebrating this year. We currently are presenting two items for consideration. $121,000 of one-time funds for the purchase of two power cuts. The goal of this purchase is to reduce lifting-related injuries to Fire Department personnel. In 2024, three of the four on-the-job injuries were related to lifting. And in addition, for the past three years, Falls continued to be the number-one call-for-service within the city. Our goal with this is to improve employee health and wellness through the use of these one-time funds. Additionally, the purchase of the LexiPol policy management system will provide legally-vetted policies to the Fire Department that comply with federal and state law as well as industry best practices. These policies are reviewed regularly by LexiPol and their legal department, ensuring that we remain in compliance with current law. The Police Department currently uses LexiPol and has enjoyed success with their partnership. Finally, Fire staff will focus on the emergency preparedness of the city with an emphasis on the wildfire challenges within the Monterey Hills. A multifaceted approach towards education and engineering will take place over the next few years with the assistance of grant funds to assist in general fund expenditures. And that is the end of my report, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm sorry, I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but this is really a question, I think, for Finance. The $4 million fire engine that was approved by Council, I think it was 4 million, no?
1.2.
Is that the one that's being built over four years? Was it 1.2? Okay, I've got the number of years mixed up with the price. Where is that in, I remember we talked about when we approved it, that we had to figure out how to account for that. Just kind of curious where that is.
Mr. Mayor, so the funding for that, for that fire engine, it was appropriated last year under Fund 116. That's the Special Projects Fund. So we're not going to appropriate it again. What we're going to do is we're going to roll over that funding over into this fiscal year, and then we're going to roll it over for the next few years until it's time to purchase the vehicle.
Okay, so there's 1.2 in the one, in Fund 116 for the fires? Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. I just thought of that myself.
And Chief, congratulations on 50 years, thank you. And I'm one of those people that will slip and fall, so I'm all in favor of what this device that you're talking about. So yeah, appreciate it.
Right, we call it testing gravity, and you're okay, you don't need to have any more.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Kathy Billings, Library Director.
Welcome back.
Thank you, I know, it's the second time I've seen you guys this year. It's very unusual for me to be up here in front of you. So the library's budget is probably one of the simplest budgets in the city. We obviously operate the library, we've had a very robust, busy year. We've had more than about 19,000 people come through the doors every month. We circulated 264,000 books, 49,000 CDs and DVDs, and 41,000 eBooks and audiobooks, and issued 4,000 new library cards. So we've had a really great year. Those numbers in terms of attendance don't include programs over the summer, summer reading program. We've had hundreds of kids and families at each Wednesday event, so it's been a really great year for us. Our budget is essentially flat in terms of operations. Obviously, there are some increases in the staffing costs related to the class and comp study, et cetera. But otherwise, it's very flat. The one-time ask that you'll see that was also on the slideshow under one-time enhancements is a request for additional funding for security guard services. So back in January, we transferred security guard services that had been here at City Hall to the library for 40 hours a week. The library is open 58 hours a week, so we have about 2/3 coverage when we're open to the public. And it has been incredibly successful having that person there to help us manage behavior. It's taken a very big burden off of staff like librarians and other staff who are not trained to handle that kind of stuff. So we would really love to see additional support during those hours that we currently do not have a security guard, both anecdotally and statistically. It's making a huge difference to have that person there. So that's the request we're asking. The difference is it's about $82,000 for the 40 hours a week and about $119 for the 58 hours a week. So that is our one-time increase, and otherwise, our budget is relatively flat.
Does that get split between Senior Center and Library? Or just in one fund?
They walk the site, you know, they'll go out, they'll stop in the Senior Center. But the Senior Center, I think, is not having the same level of problematic behavior that the library typically sees. They have a more contained clientele. But yes, they do pop in there, they pop in there.
Are the challenges you're facing unhoused people?
Not necessarily unhoused, but certainly that's a big portion of it. There's really a confluence there between mental illness, you know, substance abuse and addiction, and then homelessness. So it's a combination, but mostly it's the mental health and substance abuse and behavior issues. Whether someone is homeless or not is a piece of the puzzle, but it's typically, it's the behavior that's caused by, you know, mental illness.
I was unaware that you folks were experiencing that, so.
Yeah, we're close to the train station. It's, you know, really since COVID, it's really escalated, I think, across the country and definitely here in South Pass in terms of the number of people that are, you know, needing help and can't manage themselves in a public, in a public place.
Commissioners, any more questions about that?
Please, before you, 4,000 more new library cards? Well, they have 25,000 people in the city.
I know, well, in California, you can get a library card in any municipality as long as you live in the state. So many people in neighboring cities have our library card.
Thank you.
Yeah, good to know, you can get one anywhere, people have dozens.
I guess a wide selection, wide variety.
Yeah, you can't find it here, you can find it next door.
Yeah, and this may be more for Finance rather than you. I've got just some questions about the numbers, and I saw a little peculiarity. That is on workers' comp and group health.
Sorry, workers' comp and what was the second?
Group health insurance. Okay, and it almost looks like those two numbers are reversed. Because if you look at prior years for workers' comp, it runs around, it's gone $14,000 to $16,000, and then all of a sudden it jumps up to 131, 131,000?
I see that now as well, definitely, that looks like a.
The opposite for the group health insurance. It went from 139.7 down to 16,000, so.
Yes, that's a very astute observation, so I want to, and we are going through sort of the line item quality control, again, with a very truncated process. We really did our quality control at the fund and sort of department level first, and then we had to print the budget. So there are a few line items we've identified, maybe five or six, where there's, as you mentioned, it's very much a transposition of, you know, it's kind of in the wrong line item. So, you know, with well over 3,000 line items, we're doing that quality control now in those cleanups. But again, the net, so far, what we've gone through, the net difference has been de minimis. So, and I think maybe now is a good opportunity just to mention that this budget book and these numbers that you see in this budget book won't change between now and August 20th. What we're doing is we're noting issues such as that in the line items to show on a separate schedule of changes. So this book and these numbers will be, you know, it will be the same on August 13th and then on July 30th, August 13th, and then August 20th. And there'll just be a schedule of changes that's tracked separately. So the, like, the library line item that you just mentioned, you will see sort of a reduction here and a corresponding increase in another one. So just so that we have as accurate as possible, but we're going to track those separately so you don't see a changing book constantly.
I realized, I should also mention the library special tax, just so you know. That increase is based on the June CPI number, so it was about 3.21%. So the library special tax revenue this year should be about $434,000, so it increased over last year.
I still have some questions, go ahead.
Excuse me, sorry, if you make, just so I can hear you better, thank you very much. I also want to make sure people at home, there's probably about 25,000 people at home watching too.
Page 57 of this book, if you look at liability insurance bonds, non-departmental for Finance, if you go all the way through, I mean, there's different numbers, but then between '24, '25 and '25, '26, it's a million-dollar difference?
Yeah, so that's an item that we, we have a few estimates for insurance, and then there's a few other items that are built into that particular line item that we want to, you know, that we're making sure that if insurance goes up, if the liability goes up, that we have plenty of funding for the upcoming fiscal year. So they're potentially, you know, we're expecting things like fire and property insurance to go up this year. Not that full, I mean, it's not all of that amount, but like the fire and property insurance because of certain things that have happened, we're not sure exactly what that number is yet, but we do want to make sure that we have sufficient funding set aside to make sure that we're offsetting that. So that's one of those, that's probably one of the areas where we do make, we don't, we aren't 100% sure. It's kind of an unknown, but we know that there is going to be an increase. So we wanted to make sure that there was sufficient funding there.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense, thank you very much.
We still have some more questions about Library.
Yeah, well, these might be Finance, more than Library in particular. I was, I was looking at FICA, and salaries have increased a little bit, but FICA has dropped substantially from prior year. And I noticed that in several other cases too, there are four other cases. FICA in general looks like a pretty low percentage compared to salaries. And is that because the employees are covered under a federally-accepted-approved retirement plan instead of Social Security?
So the full-time.
There were two questions there.
Yeah, so the full-time employees do not participate in Social Security. So that is correct. And the, there are part-time employees in the library. So some of those numbers, they're not, it's only to account for the part-time employees.
Okay, now, now the other FICA, specifically for Library, it.
And I apologize, Commissioner, can you just get a little closer, just so I can hear?
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Mike, my ears aren't what they used to be.
And there's not, there is an increase in part-time employees and a smaller increase in permanent employees. But FICA dropped from 45,672 prior year to 2,576 in the current year. And I've seen that kind of a thing happen in like four other departments.
So we'll look into that, we'll look into that issue, so maybe if we can, you know, we can connect after, send an email on the one department you look, but we'll specifically look into the FICA and the year-over-year change and see if there's some trend.
Because I figured, okay, if they're part-time employees, you know, if the increase in the salaries is coming from part-time employees, then it makes a little bit of sense that FICA would go down. But it's, only in one case was it that, that way. So, yeah, I needed to ask a question.
Again, I appreciate, again, every extra set eyes is quality control, so we'll certainly look into the FICA for all of the divisions that have that and see, make sure that that's calculating correctly.
Any more questions, Library?
No, good, thank you.
Thank you, we had to run up there for no business.
Yeah, FICA is not my, my subject specialty.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. I just want to pause, and I don't want to be presumptuous, but this is the first time I've seen the mayor smile during a budget meeting, so I think it's going well, Todd. Been a few years. Again, my name is Brian Slinsky, I'm the Chief of Police in South Pasadena, and I want to thank you for allowing me to give an overview of this year's Police Department budget for the upcoming fiscal year. This budget reflects the Police Department's commitment to public safety, to community engagement, and also to being a responsible steward of city resources. And in this presentation, I'll provide a general overview of our staffing levels and then, of course, key features that we're going to be focusing on for next year. So in terms of staffing, this is the first time in roughly 10 years we are closing that vacancy gap. So we are just about there, and we, thank you. It really is due to the hard work of our HR and our other staff that are helping promote that. But we anticipate being close at the end of the year, although at the end of the year, for public safety employees, typically that's the time for retirement, so we're anticipating losing a few, but we're continuing to process, and so we're hoping that the gap and the influx in between will be very minimal. One thing to note with Police Department employees is typically requires academy time of six months and then field training. So from the time we hire an officer. One thing to note with Police Department employees is typically requires academy time of six months and then field training. So from the time we hire an officer, to actually get them working out in the street solo, we're talking about a year of time difference. So even though we may on paper be fully staffed, there is usually some sort of delay. Uh, our big focus this year obviously is budget and reducing overtime. If we looked over the last couple of years, we've had an inflated, uh, overtime budget and that was really due to those vacancies and special events. So as we bring on more and more officers, we're going to cut those, uh, that overtime, uh, reliability or, uh, need and dependency down. Looking back, probably, well, I'm going to go back a little bit. Thirty years ago, when I first started, we had a reserve force, which were really, uh, community volunteers that volunteered for the Police Department. They, they handled a lot of the, uh, city events like our Fourth of July parade. So it was volunteer labor. Over the years, given, uh, changes in laws and mandates, those forces have dwindled. So now we're reliant upon full-time staffing. So as we start to see some of those events, our overtime has come up. But as I said, we're also starting to hire and we'll see that, that budget drop. Uh, we also want to focus on our fleet replacement plan. We're out of a five-year lease. We're about two and a half years in. So we're working with City Manager's Office. We're going to look at, uh, the pros and cons of our current fleet, uh, and how we're going to address it moving forward. So what's the best, uh, the best avenue? Uh, I know there's a, a lot of different financing, financing questions that are out there and then we're looking at various platforms. So that is, uh, a significant focus for this upcoming year. In terms of our staffing, I talked about filling those vacancies. A majority of those vacancies were in our sworn, uh, but we do have a few in our non-sworn. And as I mentioned, with, uh, legal mandates, uh, training mandates and whatnot, uh, we, we are somewhat handcuffed, if you will, on, on how we can operate. But we are certainly looking at, uh, you know, different ways to become more efficient and then also provide redundancy. Uh, one thing that is coming up that we'll need to look at, which will be a significant issue for the Police Department is reopening the South Pasadena Jail. That was closed approximately twenty-five years ago as a cost savings measure. Uh, in that same period of time, we've been utilizing contracts with our neighboring cities, Alhambra and Pasadena. And, uh, we're starting to see some challenges with that as our prisoners now become their prisoners. Uh, there's a little bit of liability that they're assuming with that, uh, releasing prisoners into their own community. So we've had to do, uh, a lot of negotiating. We recently just changed our contract from Alhambra up to Pasadena, but we have certain restrictions on what we can bring to Pasadena, which ultimately the fallback is the county jail. And there's a number of issues that are going on with the county jail. So, uh, we really need to look at what opening up South Pasadena's jail would look like. That is something we want to explore with our Public Safety Commission and ultimately would have to come back to the Finance Commission. I think these are, these are much larger policy decisions uh, before we bring them to council. Uh, a, as far as capital outlay, we have a significant infrastructure project going on right now with our locker rooms and with, with locker rooms, that really, uh, is the subterranean portion of the city hall complex. And, uh, there's a lot of, a number of different plumbing issues, uh, structural issues. So we're in the midst of looking at that. Uh, right now, the Police Department's looking at utilizing asset forfeiture money that we've had to, uh, to make these improvements somewhat quickly. Uh, acquire federal funding for communications equipment. That is a big project for next year. It is something that's been on the radar for, I know I've been talking to Mayor Braun for some time about it. South Pasadena is one of the only cities, actually it is the only city in San Gabriel Valley that still communicates on analog radio. Everybody else has gone to digital, which means, uh, one, we don't have encrypted, um, radio communications, which by FCC standards, when you're broadcasting certain information over the radio for, for, uh, privacy reasons, they want that encrypted. We're also looking at compatibility as the twenty-twenty-eight Olympics come into town. Uh, they're, they're talking about millions of people, hundreds of thousands of law enforcement officers coming in and being able to communicate like that would, would be very challenging. We noticed first, uh, most significantly, the challenges with the most recent fires. Uh, we had a hard time communicating with our neighboring agencies. So we're seeking, uh, congressional funding. Uh, my understanding from, I want to say an email about a week or two ago, we were in the final stages of approval. So fingers are crossed. We're looking at about one to one point four million for this project. Uh, and as I said, we're, we're very close to having some finalized numbers and, and hopefully approval for that.
Chief, with that, the, the man that, that we replace the current equipment and then will there be training associated with those replacements?
Yeah, so absolutely. We will have to, uh, replace a, a good majority of our equipment. Our radios and, and, uh, some of the, uh, smaller pieces of equipment, those are, those we've been planning on. So we've been replacing them. Uh, I think at the beginning of the slide, one of the one-time expenditures was four radios for the police cars. Those type of things, we just, we, last year we bought a fifty-some-odd handheld radios, digital quality. So those are certainly compatible. It's really the, the, uh, the major, uh, components such as the radio tower. Bellicky Tank holds our radio tower. So that hasn't been replaced in years. As I mentioned, it's on analog. Uh, we've done a significant job in, in trying to maintain it and repair it. It is past its shelf life. So. Uh, and then, of course, our, our systems implant, implementation, that's our IT stuff. We're looking at implementing a spider technology customer service software as a software platform. And if you think of Amazon, you order a package, you get a notice right away that it's, that the order's being filled. You, you know where it's at in transit. This is a software system where when an individual, non-emergency, of course, uh, would call the Police Department, expect service, you will get notification that an officer is five minutes out. You'll get notification after the officer leaves what your case number is, and then after that, which detective it's assigned to, and then you'll get updates until that, that, uh, that case is adjudicated and, and solved. So really this is a, a customer service-based, uh, platform. Uh, and then we're going to implement the remaining CAD and RMS modules. Two years ago, we purchased a new CAD and RMS. It was roughly about a million dollars. But we were really short on the IT technical side. So we had internal staff that were acting as project managers. And, uh, the thing with the CAD and RMS, it's, it's computer aided dispatch and records management system. So it's two really robust programs that are, that are, uh, combined. They talk to each other, uh, but they all come in modules. And so we were able to turn on one module at a time and we're getting to the point now to where we're just about wrapping it up. And we want to, we want to complete the project and turn on all the modules so that we can be more efficient and utilize everything we've paid for. So having said that, uh, that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Two quick questions.
Sure.
This is back to the information services investment that the city's going to be making. Is that, there, a lot of these departments are asking probably for software. Is that part of the plan? And then, uh, Chief, I, I noticed the line item for training, it's relatively flat. I mean, we've got a big event coming in twenty-twenty-eight. So I'm wondering if we're gonna need to start making larger investments in training to deal with the crowds and the extra people and all the things.
So there, there were two different training, uh, budget line items. One was for post or state mandated training, which is over the years have changed between being reimbursable and we'd like to reimburse you. Uh, and then the other was for, for non-post items, which were things like leadership training and, uh, things that were not specifically related to Police Department. I would anticipate, yes, as the Olympics are coming up, as we have FIFA coming up, that a, as you just mentioned, there's, there's so many things that we're dealing with now that we would have never thought of years ago that we're certainly going to have to look at that in the upcoming years. But, uh, for, for this fiscal year, I think we're solid in where we're at. Uh, we, we put out together a, a training calendar. So we know years ahead of time of, uh, you know, perishable skills. We anticipate what legal mandates may be coming up. And this year we've anticipated that. So I think we're solid. Next year will be key. All right. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, Honorable Mayor, last but not least, Public Works. Antonas Sifai, Deputy Director of Public Works, Acting Co-Chair, Co-Director with Michael Vatanions. The Public, the Public Works Department is comprised, as you can see, of about four divisions. Admin Engineering, Operation Maintenance, Environmental Sustainability, and Water. Their task range from the admin side are issuing permits, uh, working in tandem with community development to make sure that projects within the city are in compliance on right-of-ways. Uh, the main thing being managing the CIP project for the city, whether it's infrastructure or facilities as well. Operation Maintenance are the day-to-day, um, tree trimming permits that are issued, the services rendered by city workforce, curb and gutter replacement, sidewalk, potholes and so forth. Environment and Sustainability is in, in charge of the, the city's green action plan, climate action plan. And most notably recently, the award of the, uh, waste haulers and finally implementing the SB thirteen eighty-three programs. And finally, the Water Division. Uh, the city is fortunate to have and to own and operate its own water systems. So, uh, with that in mind, that encompasses producing the water, treating it and distributing it throughout the systems. Notable staff changes you'll see here is the addition of two CIP program manager and, uh, project manager to manage the robust and aggressive CIP program that the City Council had requested and we're going to be partaking on in the coming years. Next slide. As I mentioned earlier, the two enterprise funds consist of the Water Enterprise and the Sewer Enterprise Funds. They're both regulated by, uh, the water, by the Safe Clean Water Act. And the Sewer Department is actually governed by regulation of the sanitary sewer management plan. These are the, uh, last week, City Council awarded, sorry, I can't see my glasses. They're kind of fading because I can't see what these two, a huge pro, uh, award for CCTV to ensure that we're in compliance with our consent decree judgment and making sure that our system is operating as it should be. You have any questions? I'll be more than happy to answer them.
We've been told over the years that are both our sewer and our water systems are aging and aging rapidly.
Yes.
And there's, uh, a great deal of deferred maintenance associated with both systems.
That's correct.
Okay. Where in the budget are you accounting for repairs, at least on a, uh, I guess, a staged basis or phased basis to get those, get us back to where we need to be?
On the sewer side or on the water side?
Yes.
That's two. It's two-pronged. Uh, we are, on CIP is going to address most of the infrastructure maintenance, but the ongoing. Maybe you can ask. Two-pronged.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. So for water improvements, we have our West Side Reservoir Project that's in a preliminary stage right now. But in the coming years, we'll see, uh, construction. That'll be the last water reservoir that the city needed to repair. Um, and then as for water infrastructure, we've started in, uh, including water mainline removal and replacement with all of our street improvement projects. So with our recent, uh, project we awarded last month.
We approved that.
I'm sorry?
We approved.
You approved? Great. Um, that's a great point. And, uh, also with the CCTV contract that, uh, Mr. Sifai mentioned that we awarded, we're going to be cleaning and recording all of the sewer lines in the city's infrastructure in year one. So we can plan holistically with all of our street improvement projects to make those repairs, um, as we have street improvement projects, but also using on-call contractors. That money is spent from our CIP program outside of the operations budget that we're looking at tonight.
And, and if I may, if I may, Chair, uh, I just wanted to draw your attention to the two, um, tables on top of this slide. So you can see in twenty-five, twenty-six, the revenue is thirteen million, whereas the expenditure is twenty million. Um, so that's really, that's the funding for these capital improvement projects that, uh, Michael's talking about, both on the, on the water side, um, and, and to a smaller degree, but it's, you know, still on the sewer side. So there are those funds, those are capital funds. And, um, the reason that we can exceed the revenues is because of those prior bond measure, measures that, you know, created a, a fund balance. And that's what they're there for is to spend on your, on your capital program. So, um, so you can see that, again, both in the water and the sewer, the expenditures exceed the revenues because of that capital program. So they are budgeted.
Thank you. That's helpful.
And these are projects that will land in the year, right? And I think that's kind of what the theme of the CIP was. We produced a CIP where we're going to spend the money in the year that we budget for the money.
Yes, significantly. I mean, some projects will be in design and we'll have funding for construction in the following fiscal years.
And then the other, the question on, uh, admin and engineering, it sounds like we're adding bodies, adding headcount. And I think on the, what's been presented to us at least, the salary line has gone way down. Is that accurate?
Yes, yes. So the, the reason is because most of those, um, projects, because they are going to be working very significantly on water and sewer, um, projects and managing those projects, they're, they're actually funded through the water and sewer. Um, and some of the other, um, some of the other positions in the department that it will be very heavily, uh, they're, they're laborably heavily focused on these water and sewer projects. They, they, they are being funded by.
By the enterprise funds. Okay, thanks.
Uh, Nick, I have a question. Public Works is, is way understaffed. They need people. Now, what, what are we doing to, to get some, some help? We, uh, make that a little bit more efficient and easier for them to get through the day?
Yeah, I think that's actually a Todd question, so I'm okay.
Yeah, we, we have, we're aggressively recruiting in the Public Works Department. A lot of the understaffed positions that you're seeing are new positions we've created, uh, that we're in the process of filling. Most of the folks that are reporting into Michael, um, in fact, are, are new positions through the CIP Department, the Engineering Department. We have had a tough time uh, recruiting those professional positions and we're, we're intending to outsource the work, but we've recently, uh, adjusted salaries. We've got a professional firm on that's out, um, recruiting those positions for us. And, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, actually Michael's in the process of the interviewing, uh, here in the next week or two. So we're hoping to start filling those, those positions. So we're not outsourcing all that work. And on the day-to-day, uh, frontline are the, we're, there's a, we're constantly assessing the, uh, the workload of the, the employees, their proficiency. Uh, we've made some decisions to, for instance, to outsource a lot of the sanitary sewer work, um, you know, that we weren't licensed to handle. Uh, and because right now the main issue is getting back into the good graces of the federal government on the, on the compliance or the consent decree rather. So where we're not, where we don't have licensed employees that can handle the work, uh, it's much better to, to televise, expedite the repairs with, uh, licensed folks that, uh, that we can submit that information, uh, back into the federal government. So where we have the proficiency, we're backfilling, where we've created new positions in engineering, CIP, we're actually aggressively recruiting right now with a couple of different firms.
Is your workload getting more manageable?
Yes, with the, uh, with filling these positions, that is, uh, we anticipate that.
Can you tell we're also residents as well as commissioners?
I can tell.
Okay.
Michael and I have been working the other.
I would, I would just build on Chief Solinsky's, uh, teasing of, uh, the mayor that I've actually seen Michael smile a couple of times recently. So it's been nice to see. Wow. Okay. Renee? No questions? Any other, any further questions? Thank you very much. Oh, wait a minute. Nope.
We are, uh, we are coming to the end. I appreciate everyone's patience and your, your very, um, cognizant questions. Uh, I think this feedback's been very helpful, uh, for staff and we'll, and we'll just make, make the process even better next week and as we move through the, the next couple of weeks. So speaking of process and next week, um, the budget schedule, the remaining budget schedule, um, tonight was our first public presentation of the proposed budget. Uh, there will be four additional opportunities for the public to participate in the budget process through, um, next, uh, next Wednesday's City Council Study Session on July thirtieth. Um, there'll be a community budget meeting on August sixth, um, followed by a joint, uh, another joint study session with this body, the, the Commission and the City Council on August thirteenth. And finally, um, hopefully this all culminates in a budget adoption on August twentieth. Uh, and then I just wanted to give a little bit of preview for, um, next year. We, we expect to have a much more robust budget process. Um, and this was a challenging budget cycle. Um, but we are already preparing, um, for some, um, a, a much more normal and collaborative budget process next year. Um, as you can see here, you know, Um, as you can see here, you know, this is a typical budget process and what we planned, you know, um, to to, when we plan to follow next year. In January, that's when we begin our internally, our revenue projections and salary projections. Uh, in February, that's again, we'll have a city council study session typically to get um, their strategic goals and priorities for the uh, upcoming year. Um, and then we typically will have the twenty twenty-five uh, audited financials for review in February. March uh, will is when we do the mid-year. Uh, and then that at that same mid-year, we'll do a budget kickoff. Um, which is just sort of set laying out the schedule for that proposed budget. In April, um, the city manager will review the operating budget requests with each of the departments. And we'll start to develop the CIP uh, program. Um, May, that's when we'll have the um, the budget, the proposed budget pro uh, posted with the CIP. Um, and then we'll start this process that we're doing tonight will be um, typically in May. Um, and we'll have our budget study sessions. And then June, additional budget study sessions if they're needed, and then ultimately uh, budget adoption. So that's what you get, that's what we're we're looking forward to next year, much more robust um, and collaborative process.
Nick, just a personal uh, request. As you um, plot out next year, could you be very um, deliberate in scheduling meetings with uh, commission meetings? Uh, we have uh, for the last couple of years that we've been bouncing around. And those meetings have been scheduled, canceled, and uh, just anything you can do to put those meetings in dark pencil, the the very least.
Sure. And 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 our goal is always um, to, I think this commission meets regularly in the third, there's a regular date, I believe.
Third Thursday.
Third Thursday. That's in the uh, that's in the municipal code. So we are going to.
Point made. There you go.
So so we're going to try and stick to that schedule um, as we move forward. So um, you know, that's our goal.
And during the budget review process and the budget, uh, the the budget review process, we understand that there may be additional meeting. But if you could plot those out for us, it'd be very helpful.
Certainly.
Okay.
And then I believe the city manager had a final note.
Yeah, I I think just two quick things. Uh, I think that this budget process was something that we we felt was important to show you. Um, I think we started off the meeting asking, you know, when are we going to get out of this cycle of uh, uh, and and onto more normal cycle? I think the difference we're viewing and why I keep saying, you know, let's let's take a look at six months where we can get to the mid-year budget update. But you're saying we're we're planning on having the the twenty twenty-five act for accomplish hopefully by next February before we get into the budget process. That novel approach will allow us to have real numbers, right, to to start the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. So uh, real important that we get the audit back on track in order to get you off this loop and get all of us off this loop. So uh, this is kind of how we're looking at things next year and hopefully making everyone's life a little bit easier. I just wanted to also, um, I really want to acknowledge um, Tatiana and Will, uh, who have spent a ton of weekends. Um, and evenings here at night putting this budget together. Uh, Nick's been with our team finishing up uh, it's week two or three? Is it three? Yeah. Um, and he jumped in on by day three and said, Todd, I'll take over from here. And so it's really been great uh, watching the three of them work together along with the department directors who um, you know, they made life easy by doing their part and kind of, you know, understanding the position we're in. So um, I I just want to provide kudos to this team. You know, when I walked in here, they were under a ton of stress and confusion about where we were financially. And uh, and everyone stepped up to to try to get us to where we are tonight. So.
Todd, I would just just want to make a one more.
Yeah.
Com- comment, I guess, bit of coaching. There was um, one of the things that got caused uh, the initial, some of the initial concern was a software program that we did buy that did five-year projections. And it was, there were. I'm I'm being generous by saying there were sophisticated guesses loaded into this uh, formula. That created a lot of angst because it showed the city, city's finances crumbling. Um. You're going to get questions, I suspect, from the city council as well as others about, is this something we're going to use in the future? And if not, that was the reason I was asking about the technology. Let's just stake in the heart of it and be done with it.
I I couldn't agree with you more. Um, I I think we've already reached that point. Um, you know, between Nick and I, we've probably got fifty years of putting budgets together, um, you know, in the municipal sector. Um, it's not that hard of a process. Once you get that, once you get that initial baseline established, you feel good about your forecasting. It's actually not that difficult here, given the the reliance on the property tax. So if you can get that right and get those major revenues right that comprise eighty-five percent of your revenues, everything's a fairly easy math equation at that point. So I don't really want to own any of this software. I think I'm going to, I mean, we've just hired a uh, really top-flight controller to work with Nick and Will and our team. And we're going to leave it up to them to, you know, put the financial system in place, make those recommendations. It's what they do. It's why we hire them. Um, and then we will leave the forecasting part uh, up to Nick, who I have complete confidence in.
I'd I'd rather deal with the people than technology anyway.
Yeah.
Be honest with you, Todd. Yeah.
Todd, where are the KPIs in this robust budget process? I heard that I keep hearing that that's an important part to get this budget award.
Yeah, the K, the uh, the KPIs are going to end up, they're going to have to be developed. Uh, there are no KPIs right now in the city that we're really tracking on a um, on day-to-day or month-to-month basis. So that's something that we're going to have to build into this budget once we get out of crisis mode. And um, I feel good about tonight and just in terms of starting to build that baseline. We're going to have to start building baseline KPIs. It's going to take a while for those KPIs to mean something, you know, so when we compare year to year.
And and uh, I gotta direct this to Nick. Nick, your predecessor, he tried to create uh, KPIs that were just three pages long. And give me a, give me a scorecard. Tell me what the top five KPIs are that that this group should be focusing on, the seven or eight, and why they're important. And it and as the, as you come back to this group and you say, hey, here's the, here's our performance against our KPIs. Uh, keep it simple, but keep it meaningful.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that feedback. And in 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 prior agencies, typically, we would ask each department to keep it to about five metrics.
Any more than five is going to be, it's going to be onerous to to track.
And it waters down what you're actually measuring, right? So I, so the idea is to measure core services. So um, what is a good proxy for a number to measure that service, right? So I I completely agree. Um, we try to keep it to four to five because beyond that, we're just confusing what the issue is.
Thank you. And and Nick, one more thing. Um, all of my questions, as you can see, I had little sticks, sticky doos on the on the pages. All of my questions were answered except for page eighty-three on the document you gave us. Uh, it is the Arroyo Seco Golf Course Fund under transfers. The amended budget was eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars transfer. Your projected is eighty-five thousand. So you, a ninety percent decrease.
I'm I'm look, oh, Lucy looks like she, oh, knows that answer and it probably has to do with netting.
Is it magical?
It can be.
It can.
The eight hundred and fifty thousand we've set aside as the transfers. It comprises of the seven hundred and ten, twenty thousand dollars for the netting project. That is transferred into the CIP along with the hundred and thirty thousand that we've expended on the part on the golf comprehensive plan. And the eighty-five thousand for next year, that's the project that we'll be working on for the uh, golf course lighting project.
Perfect. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Yep.
Wow.
Do you turn off? Uh, one quick question. When, so we're meeting with the city council next week as well. Um, when we come together for the joint meeting on the thirteenth, what has been your historical practice at that point? Is it just to kind of clean up any questions outstanding? Or how's that meeting typically been used historically? Uh, I'm I'm thinking through what that agenda looks.
I'll I'll defer to Cynthia since she has a equal number of those meetings under her belt. Then I'll jump over to you, Mayor, and then Renee and Devin. Okay, so.
Yeah, my. My recollection is that we've, it it's, well, some of them have been pretty contentious.
Mm-hmm.
They have been. Um, uh, so, but they're they're, it's, they've been an attempt to answer questions. And just kind of clear, clear up some of the numbers that that didn't relate to each other. So um, I don't see any contentiousness uh, this time around because uh, everything looks really clean.
Yep.
You know?
Mayor?
Yeah. Yeah, I think particularly last year, but I'd say for the last two years, which is how long I've been on council. Um, I think there were so many fundamental inconsistencies and numbers that didn't make sense and questions not being answered. That um, I think the meetings were very difficult, which is why we had a hard time passing a budget last year. Um, I don't see that this year. I think it's just a presentation. Um, I I think it's, I think you you've done an outstanding job laying this out and making it very comprehensible. So I don't see that. Do you guys agree with that?
We couldn't get good numbers last year. There just didn't on out.
So you're envisioning sort of a a recap of the questions that have been brought up here and and next week, and then sort of sharing that at the joint meeting?
I I I would advise you to, some of the questions that you've heard this evening are as a result of our experiences over the last couple of years. So if you built the responses to those questions into the presentation, you're going to diffuse any, a a lot of the the challenges you you might face.
Yeah, I I think.
Okay.
I think the presentation tonight was excellent. I think I think you will get some questions on specific numbers. I I've mentioned to you, I have a couple of other questions, but I'm going to do those offline. Um, and uh, but I think maybe having the finance commission say something about they've your your impressions of the budget as presented tonight, and then maybe the presentation. And that's, and the five-year projections, I would say, one of the reasons we did those five-year projections is because the prior year's budget was so questionable that we said we don't really believe that this is a sustainable spending pattern. So let's get us some five-year projections. I don't, I'm less worried about that now. But there was that NHA advisors software that did the five-year projections.
Right. Renee?
Hi, yes. Um, I joined the commission, I believe, in October or November, so I did not experience the um, the shared sessions and things. I feel tonight's uh, presentation was excellent. We went through a lot of questions. So hopefully that's a good prep for, which is they keep going on.
Thank you, Devin.
Are we just making general comment or just about that specific meeting?
About Todd's question. He's, I think what I hear Doc not doing is asking for coaching on how they're going to uh, carry this forward and get us to conclusion.
Think you've laid the great foundation and it should go smooth.
Okay, so we'll we'll head down the path on the on the thirteenth of sort of reconciling the questions we've had. One more quick run-through.
Right.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And Todd, just one of the things I I would note, Nick, I I almost ran down and hugged you when you said, hey, we're just going to be noting, this is the package that's going to city council. We're not going to try to edit it because we had version control uh, issues over the last couple of years. That when it was called out, the your predecessor took it as an attack on him as opposed to the data. So the fact that you're saying, hey, we're just noting all of the the changes that need to be made, and you'll get one clean document on such and such a date. That is exactly the way to handle it. Now, I guarantee you, somebody like me is going to go and take a look at this and say, did he really change? Okay, that's going to happen. That's going to happen. But the fact that you're doing it once, that's phenomenal. Yep.
I just have general questions, just a couple of quick ones. So the, you asked about the budget policy. So the beginning, right, at the purpose statement, it says ensure a balanced budget. And then below it says strive to maintain a balanced budget. And I know you're striving to maintain a balanced budget. So I think it's just a little bit of cleanup on that language, right? It's, are we doing it or are we not doing it? Ensure or strive to? And then um, uh, and I understand we're going to give you time to get this right. But monthly budget reports, I think, you know, the grander scheme of this is, right, we're rebuilding trust, right? This this packet is rebuilding trust in our finances and in our operating budget. And I think having more regular updates on our monthly reporting is going to be critical. So I just ask maybe a timeline of when you think, and obviously I don't expect it next month, I just, a general timeline so that the public knows when we can expect those.
Yes, thank you for that uh, that comment. And so um, you know, there was some discussion we had as a finance team. Do we change it from monthly because we haven't been doing that? And and I think um, I I think that we don't want to move the goal code, goalpost closer just because we haven't reached it yet. Um, I think it's a goalpost we still strive for. And and this is a, this is a policy, not a, you know, not a law, right? It's not, so if we don't, if we don't fall, we want to make sure that we're following this. So so we're we're certainly going to, um, we don't want to change the goalpost. We want to keep it at monthly. Uh, I would say, you know, we want to get the twenty twenty-five uh, audited financial statements complete. Um, which I intend intend to get by February, but sooner. I want, I like to overprom, underpromise, overperform. Um, but so as soon as we get that out, I can see monthly after that. So as soon as those financials are prepared, um, we can certainly have those monthly uh, those monthly uh, budget to to actual statements. We're going to try to get those even earlier. Um, I just want to make sure that I don't put Will and Tatiana in in a position where where I'm I'm making promise, I'm writing checks that they can't cash, right, or that we can't cash. So um, so I I would say give us until January, uh, February to get those out. Um, but we're going, but understand we're going to try to do those sooner.
Nick, if you could, uh, thank you. I like that answer. And could you accelerate then the uh, KPI review on a month? So we're not going to get full, a full uh, budget review every meeting, but we may just get that scorecard on KPIs. That would be helpful until you do get to a place where the full budget report can happen.
Yeah, and we can, um, I I think so the KPIs uh, probably needs to be, that discussion will probably have more like January, February. Um, going forward because uh, a lot of times, and I have to talk to departments, you know, typically, if it's the, you know, um, if it's the police department, for example, like some of their, it it's, for them, it's about crime statistics, right? And trying to make sure that those are, see what trend those crime statistics are. But I need to understand what it is that they keep. We need to have a discuss, a a pretty robust internal discussion um, before we put something uh, in front of the commission. Um, so I I would think probably about the time, January, February, as we start the budget, is when we'll be able to start reviewing some some KPIs.
In terms of uh, those monthly reports, let's say January, February, um, that's about halfway through the year at that point. There'll be forecast numbers in there as well, I'm assuming.
Yeah, so what I envision, and and actually this will be feedback that will be helpful for us. But what we have, you know, experienced in the past is that we basically have a a budget. You know, this is the budget, this is the actual, this is the remaining, um, and you know, uh, and and sort of the the balance at the end. So um, it would be just kind of providing those numbers. So by mid-year or by February, we would show you the budget was a hundred thousand dollars in this line item. Fifty thousand dollars is spent year-to-date. You know, there's fifty thousand dollars left, right? Um, so uh, that's what we would usually um, on a, on a expenditure basis, that's what we would usually have. You see expenditures tend to be more regular because it's mostly salary and we get paid every two weeks. Um, you will say, see that revenues, um, going back to that property tax doesn't come in until December and then and then usually March or April. You're going to see a big, a big swing in revenues, like we're spending more money the first half of the year than we're taking in. And then we take in a lot more money the second half of the year than we spend. So it will even out and you'll see these fluctuations. Um, so you'll start to, that'll start to make sense as you see them regularly. But we will have, you know, budget, actual, remaining. Um, and then if there is some reason to change that, we have, we expect significantly more property tax this year. That's what at mid-year, we would adjust that, but probably not before that.
And then, um, sorry, lots of questions. There's, um, this year, we separated out the CIP from today's presentation. Are we going to continue that process into next year? I I forgot. I didn't know if I saw that on that.
Yeah, so timing-wise, um, we we prefer to run them in parallel. I think this year there was another, you know, there were other extenuating circumstances, which is why it went first. However, went first. However, again, we want to consider operating in CIP budget at the same time and holistically.
And so, those monthly reports will have both?
Yes, they can have, they'll have both. So, actually working with, I know Todd and the Public Works team are working on sort of a CIP report that would go along sort of with that monthly budget, operating budget report.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, I am smiling. And I just, I cannot tell you how happy I am with this presentation, with the budget. And I know everyone here worked extremely hard on this. So, I want to thank you so much. This is, this is just amazing. It's been a tough couple of years, but we're moving forward. So, thank you all. This is, I mean, and I know we're now starting to say, where's our monthly reports? But, and I, trust me, I mean, I, it's in the priorities to sort of establish the cadence for, you know, regular reporting. I think now that we like, look at all this great stuff, now we're getting hungrier. So, which I understand, but, yeah, but thank you all. And I'll just say, we all just have to be patient, but thank you.
Yes, thank you for a very informative presentation. And I'm very happy to hear that we're catching everything up and we're doing it well so that then hopefully we can kind of keep going in the same vein. So, thanks again.
Yeah, I would say I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic on what we're, what we're building. I think there's a pathway to success, there's a pathway to a strong foundation. You guys have laid it, and I'm really excited to see where we go from here.
I would like to say thank you very, very, very much. The numbers tied, the presentation was beautiful. It was, it was logically put together. And when, when the numbers tied, my confidence level in the overall accuracy and, and preparedness, you know, how it was put together, just soared with this budget. So, that is a lot of hard work from you guys, and I really appreciate it. It's wonderful. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to ask you a question. I, I put you on the spot a little bit here. We have a city council study session scheduled for next Wednesday, the 30th, on the budget, and then April 13th. Oh, pardon me, August 13th, pardon me. Yes. Is that a study session or is the anticipation that we're going to be passing the budget at that point?
No, I think that we are hoping to adopt the budget on August 20th. Todd, just correct me when I'm wrong. And I think the August 13th is joint between Finance Commission and, and City Council. So, that will be sort of the council looking to Finance Commission and then start, you know, and, but then the council will have seen it before that joint meeting on the July 30th study session.
Okay. So, do you want or need us there on the 30th?
I'd save my strength if I were you, but if you'd like to come, you're always welcome. I mean, I, I've seen it. I don't know about my.
I'm not bored.
Yeah, yeah, I know. So, so Todd, unless you, what, what are your thoughts?
I'm envisioning actually the same, you know, proposal that we provided with you tonight. We will share with the council the questions you asked and show them the, the cleanup memo that Nick was talking about, where we're going to be tracking all the changes. If you'd like to show up, it'd be great if, if you want to. I think it might be very redundant use of your time. So.
But not the 13th. The 13th is the joint.
And the 13th is, yeah, I, I, I have not let the team forget all the, you know, the comments you made at me about numbers changing last year. And, you know, and so that's where this, this sheet came from, basically just showing you this legislative history of listening to you and the changes that are made. So, we'll, we'll review all that with you on the 13th. If there's, I, I'm hoping that it's sort of a quick in and out unless there's other questions that you might have, which is why I was asking the question about how to structure it. But yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I don't see that there's a, a need unless you really want to. I mean.
And then on the 20th, you do not need us there, right, Mayor?
I don't think so. I mean, I think, I think to, to all of your points, this was the Finance Commission's crack at this. You're going to have a, basically a duplicate meeting of tonight.
Yes.
On the 30th, but just for the council. Then we'll all come together on the, the 6th will be the community. Then, then the 13th is when sort of we'll all, we'll be together, make sure we're all agreed. And I think the 20th, hopefully, will just be a very easy Ivo vote.
Yeah, we're, we're anticipating no, no major changes by the time we're, by the time we walk out of the 13th. My assumption is that the budget's ready to be passed on the 20th. And then they will be on to some other items for the rest of the evening.
Perfect.
Oh, I have one question or point of clarification. I think one of you, and perhaps it was you, mentioned a cleanup memo. I mean, can that be emailed or sent to us? I mean, I don't envision needing to go next week, but if there was like a memo addressing some of what we said today, it would be great if we read it for the 13th.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Was it written better early?
It'll be part of the, we envision it being part of the packet for the 13th. So, you'll get that before. There may be additional, you know, kind of additions to that. But, I mean, you'll see a lot of the cleanup that we talked about tonight, like with the FICA in the library. There'll be a, you know, this is what number was in the budget. It needed to actually be $1,000 less, and it should have been here. And, you know, so there'll be, it'll be small amounts, as Todd said, but we'll have that memo as part of the agenda packet for the 13th.
You, you might just bring both, but might bring the whole budget, right?
Yeah.
The CIP, this, on the 13th, just to show our work. And then that will lay the foundation for next year if you're going to run them at the same time.
I have one more thing to say, and that is thank you for getting the materials out a week in advance. It was nice to have some time to just sit down and kind of, and go through them without having to spend 10 hours at my computer. Thank you. Very much appreciated.
Very beautiful.
Yeah.
With that, any other comments? Then I have the pleasure of calling and speaking at T50. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.